I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, the first item on the agenda is the administration of the oath to Susan Schaefer. Congratulations. Oh, no, I didn't. Thank you. Can I get a motion to open the meeting?
Yes, I'm ready.
Second?
No, thank you.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for that. So now we'll do the oath. Okay. Thank you. She's gonna take over.
You're gonna take over.
Do you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of New York and the Constitution of the State of New York and I will faithfully discharge the duties of Board of Education trustee of the SAG-Harbor Union Free School District according to the best of my ability.
All right. Thank you. Thanks. Welcome, welcome. The next thing is public input one. Is anybody interested? All right, come on up. So, for public input one, you have three minutes. Comments will be directed to the board president. The board will listen but may not necessarily respond or discuss. Please do not discuss personnel or individuals. Keep in mind that you are being recorded and state your names and addresses.
Thank you, Diana, President, members of the board. Susan, I wanted to thank you for stepping up and congratulations. I know you'll do a wonderful job. And as a parent of the school district, I'm very happy that you're sitting in that chair.
Thank you. Thanks for your support.
But I've come before you tonight to urge you to seriously consider and pass the Suffolk County Shared Services Plan. You probably remember this. This is something that we've been working, that we had worked on over the summertime. This is item number nine on your agenda. And the Suffolk County Shared Services Plan is, I think it really is the way of the future in our local municipal governments. It's a way for us to pool our resources and get those resources and things at a lower price. And I also want to recognize this board. We were the first school in Suffolk County to officially put someone on the committee this summer. That was Ms. Beishaming. And by accepting this plan, you will have another tool in your toolbox to purchase things at a lower price. Various municipalities on the East End have offered services and products that we could team up with and save prices, save costs rather. Also, there is a kind of an online cooperative. And that was something that was really brought to this committee by the SAG-Harbor School District. Katie brought that down from Green County, New York. Jennifer brought it to the board. They created something similar to that. So, you know, I'm proud to say that we have left our mark on this document and on this particular program. So, please vote yes for item number nine. And it's good to see you all.
You just can't stand it right.
Thank you, Tommy, Tommy. Thank you for your work on this agenda item. We appreciate that. Anybody else for public input ones? All right, at this point, we'll move into the superintendent's report.
And I'd like to welcome Dr. Philip Kenter, our new school administrator. I do have him reviewing our budget calendar, draft calendar, but I'm going to let him do that at the end because I thought that was just a little too much to put him right up front. As a matter of fact, he was, I would say, oh, and we're videotaped, oh, and we do go through the entire, you know, presentation. And I think by the time I started with my seventh or eighth, oh, and we also do this, I thought, well, let's put him right at the end so he can, as they say in golf, he can go to school on our ball. So, I want to start with a few things to notice on your board agenda tonight. And those are a few, two donations. One of them is from the SAG-Harbor American Music Festival, which is sagharbormusic.org, for their donation of $1,000 to the music program. They had a really stellar music festival this year, and they always try and contribute here to SAG-Harbor School. So, they're giving $1,000 to our music program. The other thing I want to highlight that will be coming on our board agenda next month, but I had sent a message to the board in their Wednesday letter that it was going to be on January 30th at noon, but they've changed the time to 10:00 AM, is Mr. Maloney, our Pearson Technology teacher, last month presented that he had wrote a grant to Toshiba for technology, and he was awaiting whether he would be granted it. He was granted the technology grant for $18,500 to use to purchase a CNC machine for the technology classroom. So, Toshiba will be sending out a representative here, January 30th. I heartily invite the board to be present for that. I've invited our local media to come in to be there for the handing off of the check. And I know all of you are sitting there going, hmm, a CNC machine, I know just what that is. And Scott Fish and I are discussing today that it's really the opposite of a, oh, gosh, I'm going blank. Scott, jump in there.
Go ahead, next.
It's the opposite of a 3D printer. So, here are some of the things that a CDC machine can make. One of the things that students were well aware of that I didn't know walking down the hallway, because I said to them today, so do you know what a CNC machine makes? They're like, yeah, Mrs. Graves, it makes a guitar. I was like, didn't know that. It also can make all the stage scenery. It can make tables, legs. It routers out anything that, you know, you take a piece of wood and it routers out all kinds of, of course knows what it's doing. Okay, well, I didn't know if everybody knew what it was, but it's going to be a really wonderful addition. And of course, we're getting one that's at a higher price mark. So, this is going to be just a great addition to our technology program. I also wanted to note that our students, when the Southampton had their first opioid forum, which I attended and I'm on the task force forum with, we heard very loudly in Hampton Bayes that students needed to have a voice in this. And so, this week, on the 17th, they had students from all of the East End schools come together. Kim Laubie and Jay Snyderman hosted the forum, and our students had a beautiful voice. You should have been really proud of them. They really were, I was very proud because they were the voice. It wasn't the grownups explaining to them. It was them explaining to the grownups where their concerns are, where they think that this problem is coming from and how to solve it. And you would have glowed to listen to our students from Pearson do the speaking and do the input. And at this point, I think I'm going to play Jeff Nichols because we have a tremendous illness moving through. We lost first our middle school assistant principal, then this afternoon, we lost our high school assistant principal, and our principal tonight said, I better go home and rest because it's not looking good. We have quite a virus going through. So, if you take a look at the past events, we had the seventh and eighth grade band and chorus winter concerts. You'll see some pictures that'll follow about that. The sixth grade chorus visited morning program, and I'll have Mr. Malone speak about that. We had our early release drill before Christmas Vacation, which is a great way for us, if we ever had to leave the building, we have a chance to practice that. I know that it's a little alarming, but we really do have to know what it feels like to leave a building because some folks are very reluctant to do that. And it was very effective. And we do report that to New York State. It's one of those list of things that a superintendent must certify with New York that we have done. We had our winter recess, our middle school, we're in HMEA. And then we had our Rachel's Challenge presentation, which really resonated with the students. As a matter of fact, I can tell one story, our head of bus, part of Rachel's Challenge, the students are to close their eyes and visualize somebody who is really meaningful to them that if they needed, they could reach out. And so, usually it's their parents or grandparents or a really trusted neighbor. So, a number of the students were getting on the bus that day, and they said, Tamaud Stevens, our head of bus, you're one of the people I think about when I know I can really trust because you would always keep me safe. And Tamaud came into my house the next day and burst into tears and went, you have to do more Rachel's Challenge. So, conversations with them in a straighters. And then these are some of the pictures from things that have been taking place. Upcoming events, we're going to be having an admissions game, 6:30 in the Pearson auditorium. The admissions game teaches not only our parents and our students, but also any community members that want to learn about this, about what it takes to get into the college of your choice. And it's not just GPA. It's not just your grade point average. It's also about building what they call strength of schedule. Are you taking the strongest possible classes for your ability? Are you doing community service? Are you doing things that you love? Can they see through your transcript also about the essays that you write, the letters recommendation that you ask for? So, there's a lot of factors to put in place, and you can't, you know, you can go as early as a seventh and eighth grade parent to start listening in about children building their strongest strength of schedule.
Let me make a suggestion because I've been to a few of these before, and I think they're so valuable. And I think we do, our guidance department does a really good job. I would just request that going forward, that these types of things aren't during midterm week because I'd love my daughter to go, but she's got two big midterms the next day. So, it would be kind of irresponsible for me to pull her out of study. So, I just think that even if it's the week after, because we have that and the IB night are both midterm week nights.
That's a good point. Yeah.
And Katie, you said it's open. You encourage parents as young as some day three to come. What about students?
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, including the students?
Yeah.
And that's why I broke that up. Sixth grade or seventh grade?
You know, I started with my own children because I had to do this, I used to have to get on buses and take students around. And I started seeing the value in just children feeling comfortable walking onto campuses at a very young age to go, you know, what do I like about this campus? What resonates with me? I think that it's really worthwhile for them to start hearing that music early, really early, and hearing it from somebody other than their parents, you know, because then they're hearing it from someone who's really objective and is giving them that, those hints about what to look for even when they walk on a campus. So, do you like a rural school? Do you like an urban school? Do you like a suburban school? So, a sixth grader could be going with their older sibling and go, I don't like this campus or I really like this campus. So, they start doing that sorting early. The earlier the better, in my opinion. And I think I'm, it's Mr. Malone's turn. Can I hand you off?
Thank you, Mrs. Graves.
Oh, what? You had another one? Did I miss something?
I, I, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, yep, I'm sorry. Oops. High school, then there's IB information night coming up, and those are for future that have questions. And the same is true, I think, that the younger, it doesn't have to be just 10th grade, it can be ninth grade or earlier. Then also, we have our high school HMEA coming up. And we also have our high school orientation for, at 6:30 in the Pearson library. Middle school musical, Suzical, is going to be coming on board our first week in February. And from what I'm hearing from the auditorium, it'll be a fabulous treat. And I understand tickets are going very fast. So, I encourage everybody. And then we also have conversations with administrators. So, that'll be in the guidance conference room. And thank you. I was going ahead. I'm not used to doing this.
Katie, can I, I think, can you also mention something that happened this past week with, I think, the middle school teachers deserve huge kudos for the ski trip?
Oh, yeah.
Where they took 82 middle school students for the day, leaving here at 4:00 in the morning, two buses. And, I mean, the kids loved it. It was a huge success. And I think all those teachers deserve some combat.
They came back.
They all came back from peace.
None of them, one day?
Yeah, one day. They went up, they literally left here at 4:00 in the morning, and they got back here, I think it was 8:00, 7:30, 8:30?
Yeah, yeah.
Where did they go?
Bel Air.
Bel Air, yeah. Which actually is a state, it's a state park. It's a state park, which I always think is interesting. It's a state-run.
Terry Federico said the funniest thing. She said, I just arrived safely at a ski mountain with 80 kids from the seashore. And I thought, oh, God bless her.
And a lot of kids out here have never gone skiing. You know, it's not easy to get to a slope, so.
And you know, it's a very important social skill to have, especially when you're at college, because all of a sudden, you'll get to college and everybody's going, we're going on a ski weekend. And if you can start that, learn to ski at a young age and just be able to manage, it's a social skill to have, you know, because you're invited to.
The kids apparently had a great time. And I heard that it also broke down some walls in certain groups because all of a sudden.
Everybody was falling on their ass all the time.
Well, Stephanie, that's one way to put it. No, you know, but also some kids who, you know, maybe could ski and so.
Helped others?
Exactly. So, there's a lot of positive stuff that can happen. So, I think it was great.
I ran my best friend over in our middle school. That's how I met her. I ran her over. And I, we both fell down, and I said, goddamn it, Ann, I told you to get out of the way. So, there you go.
Best friends ever since.
Best friends ever since.
Thank you for sharing. Oh, yeah. There's our middle school, there's other ski trips.
I think Sasha, I purposely left out the ones of the kids who were not standing up right.
It's a wonderful social skill. So, we're, the upcoming events, and I think we also, some parents that went along too to help out too, which was really great.
Yeah, so I'm sure.
Yeah. So, Mr. Malone?
So, Mrs. Graves, if it's okay, Ms. Ray Nelson is going to present.
We like that. And we like when you lean in.
Oh, yeah.
There you go.
First, I'd like to welcome Mr. Kenter and Mrs. Schaefer to the board. Look forward to working with you. So, the elementary school is always chock full of events. The swim program continues. I have some photos of that, the kids participating in the East Hampton Y and C I swim programs. The Martin Luther King Junior presentation, it was something that the fourth grade, fourth grade students worked on, Mr. Osinski's class. And it was a really moving, very powerful presentation, just as far as keeping history relevant and kids understanding the importance of why we celebrate that holiday and why we're off from school, acknowledgement of that. Mr. Fox, and a former SAG-Harbor Elementary student, performed the cello, which was an amazing performance. I think, for the most part, people just kind of zoned in and appreciated classical music at its best. And being able to see a former student up there presenting in that way, I think, was also really powerful. One little person, Giselle Espinal, her and her family, performed a random act of kindness. And when we think about our kids getting older in our building and the importance of kids early on learning not only about global contributions, but also local within our community of helping others in need, this family was out on one of the snow days and going to 7-Eleven to get hot cocoa, coffee. And when they were walking into town, they saw a 70-year-old man who was trying to shovel himself out, having a difficult time at that. And the family kind of saw that and went to 7-Eleven. And then Giselle spoke to her parents about going back to that gentleman's home and helping shovel him out. So, they cleared out his driveway, his walkway. And after that, they put an ad on Facebook offering that service to families in the community. I think they helped about 12 or 15 families in need. And that was just, again, a random act of kindness that a fourth grader offered to do. I Love New York presentation by another fourth grade class, Ms. Latanzio. And again, you know, the idea of the importance of history and why we celebrate the things we do and across the gamut of our state flower, our state gem, and presenting to the entire school, which is really great. Some photos here. This is, so these three girls to the left, that's them leaving school. And they're smiling, which is awesome. The picture just to the right, I know it's hard to make out, but this is one day when I was covering out to a recess. The girls there called me over because they had written on the sand there just a message that read, I love school. You know, incredible things happening in our building, celebrating the holidays, some of the performances that took place. We have a, it's not really like a door decorating contest. Well.
It's a tradition.
It's a tradition, right? So, for the most part, I would say like 97% of the teachers participate in this, this display during the holidays. And the theme obviously being kindness this year. And again, just really keeping it relevant and the day-to-day that the kids are exposed to these kinds of things. Light up the world with kindness. It's a fact. Kindness is a gift that keeps on giving, and it's cool to be kind. Ms. Peralozzi, former crossing guard, still, you know, a little bit of a prankster, used to damage Santa before he went into the pre-K class. Santa visiting the school. There's some fifth graders sitting in the front, and it's hard to make out, but you could still see the awe in their face with Santa coming to school and some more door To the left, just last week, we had a visitor. This is a screech owl that was in the parking lot just by Harbor Market. This picture was taken probably like at arm's length, which, if you know anything about owls and general screech owls, it's very rare to see them during the day and awake. So, this one was awake and alert. The kids didn't get to go because they probably would have scared him away, but he lingered the entire day, which is really cool. Sleigh riding at Pearson Hill, those are my daughters, by the way. One to the right is only two. She's old enough to carry her own sleigh, right? Swimming at the Y. And then upcoming events, the PTA-sponsored event, the movie Sing, excuse me, an afternoon matinee, allergy awareness presentation by Mrs. Polkingham. Musical Theater will perform. We have our science fair, annual science fair, and also the annual student exhibit at the Tarasawar Museum. And I believe that is all. Mr. Fisher?
Can I touch on something with the high school tomorrow that I didn't see on the slide? I think it's, there's a blood drive, right?
Yes.
From, I think it's 8:00 to 2:30. And 8:00 to 2:00, thank you. And I think it's student-run. And I don't know if they need to get a minimum number of donations they need, and then they get some kind of, I think, donation before college. So, if people like to donate blood and cans tomorrow.
And I also, I didn't see up here, and I'll have to get the information, the high school Student Council is going to a meet, the founder of Me Too, they're going to that presentation. Yeah, Chip Kinnear has, their advisor has a connection with the person that founded that. Yeah. So, they're going to be doing that within the next 10 days.
Good evening. Just to give you an update, our Cyber Patriots program had another competition this past Friday night, our state round of the competition. Our numbers are dwindling a little bit. We've been saying a very long commitment for the kids, start in September, and we could concede that we go there through April. So, it's very difficult for some of the kids with the other activities they have and so forth. In fact, this particular round, we were not able to put together a middle school team because two out of three of the remaining students were going on the ski trip the next day and had to go home and pack and go to bed. So, they were not able to participate. Prior to this round of competition, our middle school team was second in the state. So, we'll see what happens as a result of the competitive. You know, they're having fun and they're learning. This is the high school team. We moved the location to the space next to the tech room for this particular competition, but we're going to move back to the lab for the next rounds. But this is the high school team, hard at work, trying to solve all the issues that were presented to them in terms of computer security. And if you've been over in the middle, the elementary school lately, you might have noticed a few new interactive displays in a couple of the classrooms. As the smart boards have become end of life, we've elected to go with this type of a design. It looks and behaves just like a flat-screen TV, except that it's interactive, so the teacher can literally walk up to and touch it just the way they could with an interactive whiteboard. So, they can broadcast all of whatever it is they're working on from any device, whether it be a laptop or any other mobile device, and it can be displayed up on the screen. And some of the advantages are that we are replacing both the smart board and the projector. So, there's no longer a need for a projector in the room. There are additional tools built right into the displays themselves that provide greater functionality for the teachers. As I just mentioned, we don't require a separate projector. There's also no shadow, so if the teacher was between the projector and the board, there would be a shadow in some cases. And we never have to replace the bulb anymore, which is something that we do quite frequently around here.
Scott, what is the cost of, pardon me, what's the cost of these screens versus a smart board, just out of curiosity?
It's actually cheaper to go with the screen if you factor in the smart board and the projector.
That's what I figured. Because I remember when we first rolled out the smart boards, there was a lot of discussion about cost, which is why that.
Yep. No, took a close look at that, and the real benefit is, well, there's a couple of things. We don't have to physically buy projectors any longer. We don't have to replace the bulb. We don't have to buy the mounting kit and all that and separate power and everything that goes with it. So, now, everything is housed up at the front of the room on the TV, just like it is in the home. And these particular models even have speakers built right into them. So, unlike the smart board, where we had to have separate speakers mounted on the wall and plugged in at all times, everything is one unit. So, the teachers that are using it, we have a few over at the elementary school. We just put in, literally one this past weekend, two the week before, and we put one here at the high school. So, we have a few of them going in classrooms. And when we start to talk about budget, you'll see that I'm going to include an ample number of these at both buildings because we're at that point, as you'll recall, Chris, it's probably about seven or eight years now since the smart boards first went in. So, they're really, it's really time to move on from those.
Can I ask a question about these? So, in other words, I'm assuming they're Bluetooth. If somebody wants to get online, how do they do it?
Well, these particular ones have built-in wireless. So, technically speaking, anybody who's using the device doesn't actually have to have a computer to do anything. They can walk right up to the place. It's got a built-in web browser. They can go out and surf the web without ever having to connect another computer to.
And is it just a, literally a touchscreen?
Yep. You walk right up to it, touch it with your finger.
And when I spread that, we did that, that's probably the smartest thing.
Well, keep in mind, the smart boards are that way as well. Although they did have pens, you could touch it, but this is, you know, much more immediate.
Right. Okay.
And the bulbs are so cost prohibitive.
Oh, absolutely. And the quality of the image is so much better. I mean, you know, what you're seeing.
What about the size of them?
Well, we, the last, we initially started putting in 65-inch ones. Probably Mr. Neel's class, we went in, and he said, it's really nice, but it'd be great if it was just a little bit bigger. So, the last batch we put in are 70 inches diagonally, and the feedback I'm getting from the teachers, that's perfect. They don't need it to be any bigger than that. You know, that is one trade-off. You do get a bigger image out of a projector, generally speaking, or you have the potential for a larger image. But I think we found the sweet spot with the size that we're putting in now. It seems to meet everybody's needs.
That an entire class can position brights in.
Right. And that the teacher feels there's enough room to display everything that he or she might be working on.
Scott, can I ask you another question? What are we doing with the old smart boards that we're taking out?
We're only taking them out if they're not working. So, if they're not working, they're being disposed of. We're actually, what we've been trying to do for the last two years is, as we've been taking them out, replacing them, we're keeping key parts that are the parts that tend to go so that if we still have another smart board that's in a classroom, if that part goes, we can replace the part without having to replace the board. So, we're trying to keep the boards as long as they'll work, but it comes to a point where they just, they don't any longer work.
So, this isn't just like a replacing systematically, it's like if one goes down, we're replacing them with something better?
Right, right. When they fail. But the problem is, you know, I saw this happening last year, so I started this year putting them, and now I'm glad I did because they're all, you know, what I expected to happen has happened. They were all put in around the same time, so they're all starting to go around the same time depending upon, you know, how much usage they got. We've already, I think for years, we've been, the projectors have been replaced many times since the smart boards went in, and we've had to really work hard to come up with projector models that would work with the smart boards because whoever remembers the original model had the arm with the projector built right into it. So, then we only had certain projectors that would actually be able to replace it. And then we bought adapter plates to make other projectors work, and it worked fine. I mean, we were able to, but we've sort of been, you know, putting off the inevitables for some time now. So then we only had certain projectors that would actually be able to replace it, and then we bought adapter plates to make other projectors work, and it worked fine. I mean, we were able to, but we've sort of been, you know, um, putting off the inevitables for, for some time now. So we did the best we can to, to keep them around as long as we can, but when it comes time to replace them, this is the model that don't work.
So eh, eh, I don't know where you were going Diana, but eh, is it worth it to, to a school that has zero to take up, uh, a, a smart board that we know does not work? And buy a part to fix it if they had nothing, or is not even, eh, technology's passed?
I know that Hampton Bays just did a mass refresh from what I could tell, because they put out, uh, a notice that they had X number of smart boards for sale. And I don't think he's gotten any tape or so, and those were working.
Got it, okay.
As far as I know, so I don't really think there's a, a big market out there for.
For ones that don't work, right?
A lot of, I mean, this, another, um, unexpected side effect of the broken equipment is, we happened to store it over the summer in the, um, the old weight room downstairs. It's divided into two, it's now being used for robotics, and magically, a lot of the stuff that had been disposed of was brought over to the robotics side and put to use. Torn apart and they, you know, gutted it out, so, so I was, I was very glad to see that, that anything they could use, um, they did, so.
To practice taking a part?
No, just, they need different components to build other things, you know?
To build the robots.
Yeah, this is like a junker to part it up.
I watched a new windshield go on my car today, I was fascinated. Okay, good.
Thank you.
How are you? Um, well, Bill, eh, this picture was taken on Friday, and there's no snow, so, um, we had a lot. No more. Oh, wrong one, excuse me. So the bus light, lights, um, great news, they're showing up this week, the shields. And we will be addressing this issue by the end of this week. Um, I just got off the phone before I came to the office to, uh, into the presentation, and they said they have been shipped. We should receive them hopefully by tomorrow or Wednesday, and then we're, the contractor's standing by to install the new shields and hopefully make the community a lot out of it, so. That's probably my highlight on my slide right now. Uh, this is an RPZ valve, uh, over at the high school, uh, sorry, at the elementary school, it's outside. And you wouldn't know it today, but last week we had some really low, low temperatures. And water flow to the elementary schools was, wasn't really there. And it was because of this valve right here. So, um, we added some space heaters in the space, and it defrosted the valve, and we were able to supply domestic water to the building. We never really lost it, but it was, it was, it wasn't enough pressure there to keep all the, uh, diaphragm from functioning properly. And that was a really easy, great, wonderful fix, and I'm really proud of the guys for really coming together on that one. We had a power outage on January twelfth, Friday evening. Um, reason was because PSENG had a transformer out on the street that blew, and it affected all, you know, our building entirely. Uh, we lost lights, scoreboard, Eric, um, scoreboards, heat pumps. When the lights came back on, the power came back on, we had to go around and reset all the equipment. We missed a couple of pieces.
Can we also point out that there was games going on in both gyms?
Yes, both gyms, both, eh, middle school and, uh, high school, right.
Well, did it help our teams or hurt our teams?
Eric?
Luckily we were ahead in both.
We're doing fine. We're doing fine. So we had to reset some units, uh, we did, some of the units that we thought reset didn't quite reset. We had some cold sections of the building, which we, we didn't lose anything, everything went fine. We troubleshoot, we located the issues, we, we set those, uh, units, most of them were rooftop units, three phase motors. Um, I just thought, our emergency light worked great, uh, all the lights popped on in the building. And, um.
But Marcus was saying, this was a really great learning experience for us because it really, it taught us a lot, you know, since it was a community power outage. But we were able to learn a lot from that, so, like, we found out that certain things didn't turn back on.
Right, now we know where to go.
Yeah.
You know, and I'm a new guy in the block, and so I'm checking everything anyway, but.
No, we don't have a generator.
Bottom line is that, uh.
Do they have, they turn on?
Oh, we have, uh, we have, um, emergency power lighting.
Right, they, the battery backup, like the ones in the hallways and whatnot.
So, so you have lights that come on all along, so we have, we have lighting, so that, it was really great, because there was a lot of little ones in the middle school.
Yeah.
So, you know, they, all the lights went out, and you hear this, I was in my office and all you're hearing is, wah! And you hear yay! So, and it was great, because I think it was Phil's second day on the job, and, and he was like, can I see where the electric room is? I was like, I know where that is, and, uh, uh, so that was good. But then we also realized certain things didn't restart naturally, so that they should, so.
And it was great that, uh, you know, we know it works.
Yeah.
It's a good thing you had everyone's job.
Right?
That you can find the electric box, yeah.
Well, Mr. Maloney is doing some really great things down there. Not only does he have the CNC machine, these are three pieces of equipment that we just powered up for him. We just installed some new power to the room, uh, to accommodate a joiner, a planer, and a drum sander. And, uh, he's pretty, pretty excited to start using this thing, these things, and the kids are really into it as well, so. Good stuff, um, both our department as well as the shop department, we're kind of working hand in hand on that.
And we'd love to show these things off to the board, um, firsthand, because all of these have ultra safety, safety, safety mechanisms on them. They all have, I mean, they're, they're really built for children, you know, so.
In order to use them in schools, you have to have all these certain requirements that you would never see in woodshop.
Right, right.
So. That's all I really have this week, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody, I would like to, uh, thank Marcus's team when the lights did go out in the building, uh, they responded. I had four flashlights right there, I had a gym full of people, and that, and as Mrs. Graves alluded to, it was, uh, it was, it was a little scary for a couple of minutes, but. Uh, I also like to thank Holly, who physically went around and checked all the lighting over the last year or so, so, um, you guys did great. Very, very busy, uh, a couple of weeks here in the sporting world. First day of, uh, winter sports today, late winter sports. It's, uh, the middle school winter season is divided into two basically six-week seasons. This is commonly known as when the boys and girls switch basketball. So, uh, the boys go to volleyball now, and the girls go to basketball. We also have our wrestle, our middle school wrestling team in there. Uh, our varsity JV teams are, are underway, and we're, we're heading steadily towards, uh, we're pretty much, we're about two-thirds of the way through the season. Tomorrow night we'll have our winter athletic committee meeting at six-thirty. Uh, the agenda will be posted, uh, during the day tomorrow for that meeting, uh, I've, I've been working with Mrs. Graves on that agenda. Spirit night is a, it's a big one. It's, uh, this is a, uh, this is a wonderful event, I believe it's the seventh annual event, it's been put on by the Sag Harbor Booster Foundation. It really highlights, uh, using basketball as the vehicle, it really highlights our, uh, our community. This year we have some special events planned, uh, as we do every year. And it, it really is promising to be a, a wonderful, wonderful night, I'm trying to save my energy and my voice. It will be, I really think the highlight will be, uh, once we go from the, from the pep rally, we go right into the games. Uh, what we did this year is, we moved the first responders game to a different night. We figured, why not pack the gym two nights? And, uh, what'll give us more time to get in all this stuff that you see up there, uh, we'll have our varsity girls game versus Southhold. That is a league rival, that will be a highly contested game. And we'll have our youth parade at halftime, we'll have the little guys come out, and then they're gonna play some games in between. And then we'll highlight, we'll end the night with the varsity boys, uh, versus Ross. I did survey the students if they wanted to switch the girls and boys games, uh, on an annual basis. Uh, you know, 'cause let the girls play the later game, and, uh, the girls were perfectly fine with playing the first game, so, um. We kept the same format, other than moving that first responders night. As I said, the first responders night is, it's another wonderful community night. We invite the Sag Harbor Ambulance Corp, the, uh, fire department, as well as the police department, and they come and play us some basketball. We usually beat them up pretty good, so they actually just challenged us to a hockey game this Sunday night, so Mr. Malone might have to dust off the skates, all right?
Eric, can I ask a question about Friday night? You mentioned you surveyed the students, was that the students who were on the teams or the student population?
On the teams, I, I surveyed the girls on the teams.
I'm just, I'm just throwing out there that, that, and I respect that that's what the team, the players wanted. But I do think it could be inspirational for girls to see us, um, highlight and have the star attraction be a girls' team.
Absolutely, and, uh.
So for, I, I, you know, it might be interesting to, to, to survey the entire population and not just the team.
The, the other point that I was, that I was a little, uh, the, the one that had helped me, made me held off on that was, the cheerleaders, the cheerleaders traditionally cheer during the boys' game? And not during the girls' game? And they do their halftime routine in the later game? So I wanted to give them the, also the platform, the later platform where, um, but I honestly believe, I think the attendance will be pretty good throughout. So I don't think that the late game will be that much more widely attended. But, uh, two are, two are girl, most of the girls agreed on the team, that they would prefer to play their game and then be involved in what I would consider the older, the upperclassman activities later in the evening, so. Uh, I will definitely revisit this on an annual basis.
This might be good for the athletic committee meeting tomorrow night.
Absolutely.
Eric, I have another question on the first responders, will we be having a revisit of Mr. Nichols and, um, Mr. Malone playing again? Because I want to tell you, I think that was a real draw. I still have that on my camera. I have those pictures on my camera, I will keep them forever and ever.
Well, if you get Mr. Malone out there, you get four hundred people from the elementary school.
That's all I'm saying. We're on video, I would like to know.
Mark, Marcus said he was gonna lace them up too, so it was, uh.
Oh my god, you, you've gone totally red.
I started scratching, there you go. He's starting to work out.
We're gonna need to replace the bulb.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna be working with the, uh, the student council, uh, and just on a side note, the, the student council this year has been very active, um, in coming to me with ideas. Running things by me, for example, they wanted, they wanted to emphasize the fact that the decoration contest on Spirit Night will have some weight in Whaler Day points. So what I told them is, I will give them a formula, do they want it to be weighted heavily, do they want to be weighted, you know, and they, uh, they, they've been in contact with me. And I told them, I said, listen, I'm not the judge, I'm just gonna record the scores. And, uh, so, um, I'm also going to approach the student council on, uh, for the first responders night and see if we would like to do something, uh, of a charity of their call, of their, of their choice. So, another wonderful night, we're gonna get through Spirit Night and then we'll move on to first responders night.
Um, Eric, I, I heard rumor that you could have a thousand pointer hit, uh, in the boys' game?
Um, we do have a student that is approaching that number, um, it's a possibility, I, all I can say is show up and see what happens.
Okay.
So, uh, um, it could happen, it could happen, and, uh, that would be great for the team. Uh, this February is notoriously, uh, the time of year where, whereas an athletic department in conjunction with the neighboring athletic directors, we have to make our choices about the, uh, platform that we're gonna offer for next year. Uh, February first is usually the magical date, uh, there is a little bit of latitude with that, but not much. The numbers came out today, uh, actually I was given the official numbers, the, uh, the beds numbers, the enrollment number, and I'll cover that in a second. I just wanna be clear that this is the current, this is the proposed program that I've sent to Section eleven, which will be running next year. I'll go over briefly, uh, as you can see for the boys, we're going to host three JV and varsity level sports. Middle school is a separate topic altogether, I have, I have a little bit longer to configure that, uh, I can give a middle school update as we get moving forward. Uh, anytime you see plus Bridge Hampton, uh, obviously, they would be coming to us. One big thing that I have to work out, and I'm, and I've attended several meetings, uh, with local athletic directors, is football. The landscape of football as we know is changing for various reasons, um, you know, uh, and especially on the East End. Uh, there are many struggling programs which are seeking relief. It's, without, without getting into all the nuts and bolts of the process, uh, I am working very closely with East Hampton, Southampton, uh, also from Mercy and Hampton Bays. I'm working with all the athletic directors from the, basically the six or seven schools that we're surrounded by, uh, to figure out a solution to sustain football, eleven-man football, uh, on the East End. Uh, at this date, I do not know exactly what the proposal will look like, so I don't have an answer for you who our combination will be for next year. Girls' soccer, we offer a little bit more, excuse me, girls' fall sports, we offer a little bit more. We're gonna offer, um, six sports for the girls, with two of them at East Hampton. Winter sports is, uh, pretty much in line with, uh, our previous years. Uh, wrestling goes to East Hampton, uh, that started up today at the middle school level. We haven't had a large impact of numbers of wrestlers in recent years, but, uh, our middle school numbers are very promising. It also helps that our bus driver is the coach, so it, it works very nicely, he can kind of get the kids going out there. For, for, for the girls, uh, we're moving into, um, the winter for proposal next year. I highlighted one item here, uh, I spoke to the athletic director from Bridge Hampton the other night, Mike DeRusa. What we're planning on doing currently, we have a non-competitive cheerleading team. Uh, essentially what non-competitive means is we do not compete against other schools, uh, and we are not allowed to do any stunts. A stunt is classified as anytime you leave the ground, uh, you know, cartreals, flips, anything like that, for obvious safety reasons. Bridge Hampton this year started a competitive cheerleading team. And what, what we decided was, we were going to have them host us in the competitive cheerleading, but we would allow the girls or boys to, uh, also cheer in the non-competitive form, so they essentially could do both. And we'll structure the practices around that. So if you were gonna go to a basketball game, the cheerleaders would still be there. If you go to a Bridge Hampton basketball game versus Pearson, it would be pretty cool to see a combined cheerleading team at halftime, and then they go to their separate corners and cheer against each other for the rest of the game. But, uh, I just think that would show that, uh, that is everything the East End is about in terms of rivalries and, and, and stuff like that. This would also, uh, after surveying our current cheerleading squad, there were several girls that said they were interested in competing. There is a state championship now for cheerleading, uh, Bridge Hampton is not there yet, again, it's their first year of existence.
Wait, I'm sorry, Eric, can you back up? Can I just ask a question? Can you just explain, where did the rules come from about with non-competitive where they can't even leave the ground? Because cheerleading is all kinds of jumps where you would leave the ground that aren't, I don't think one would classify as dangerous or acrobatic or gymnastics like the competitive cheerleaders do. So they, where, where does that rule come from?
Essentially what Section eleven, the governing body of athletics, has done is they've said, if you have a non-competitive cheerleading, so eh, each year when I file for, like, I don't file that team to Section eleven, because they, they don't regulate. So we've, we've kind of made it a, a known thing where I don't want them performing stunts, because I have no way of making sure that that coach is evaluated to be able to coach those stunts.
Right, no, oh, I, I, I agree with you on stunts, but you said they can't leave the ground.
That's considered a stunt. Anytime you have a, eh, you leave the ground, um.
But that would include jumps and kicks and.
It would, it would.
I mean, I, I'll, I'll look into it, I mean, I, I have nothing about competitive cheerleading, I was a flyer, to my days. I was the girl that got thrown up in the basket toss and did a flip and came back down.
Right, and that I can, that I can understand why you'd have rules on, but some of this, that is not leaving the ground, I don't understand. I'd like to understand more of where that comes from and why.
I think it's becoming more of almost like a, the dance team.
It's more of a.
Yeah, even in.
I, I can tell you too that I'm not, I'm not at the games policing what the cheer squad is doing in terms of like if they're leaving the ground or not, but.
And you don't want, but you don't want them to.
I don't want them to leave the ground, so that I instruct their coach not to put that into the routine.
I looked at some of his training, he knows how to do that, and there's all sorts of.
You don't want them doing that, believe me.
I, and, all right, I, I'd love us to look into this a little more, but that just seems.
But that's why I think we're bringing in the competitive, surely.
When I was a cheerleader, it was exactly like this, we had a non-competi, I went, I went to a big school as a cheerleader.
You didn't leave the ground? It was different back then.
No, we actually didn't.
We left the ground.
We left the ground!
We left the ground.
Well, we didn't wear seatbelts.
Hey, should I still smoke?
Anyway, okay, all right, I'm sorry, I just.
Go ahead, Eric.
Okay, um. For the spring, uh, we're, we're the same as we've been, uh, on the boys' side for several years now. And, uh, on the girls' side, we are also, um, pretty much the same. The only thing that would come in question is because we have an introduction of our middle school lacrosse team, is next year I would, I would meet with East Hampton and obviously survey our students to see if we would run a JV team here. With the eventual, uh, idea to host a varsity team in the, many years down the road, but as of now.
Is that be like East Hampton coming here or still being separate from East Hampton?
Uh, we would be separate from East Hampton at the JV level, that's proposed right now. I have to use the pilot program that we're doing at the middle school level to see if I have the numbers to support that team and eventually move towards varsity. It is cyclic, uh, I can tell you right now, uh, the girls playing softball, uh, from a, from below middle school is not a high number. So we kind of have to look down the road a little bit, this may be the way it goes. It, it could be cyclic, it could be, it could be a long-term trend, so we have to look at it.
But I, I'm sorry, Eric, this would be for two thousand and.
Eighteen nineteen.
Next year, next school year.
Next spring.
Right, next spring of nineteen.
Yes.
Spring of nineteen. When you, when you have those conversations, do we take into account that unless we were combined, East Hampton might not be able to field, uh, team?
East Hampton's number, yeah, we, we take all that into account.
We do.
Uh, and, and this is a conversation that I don't have to have now. I get a couple more months because it's a spring sport. Uh, I, I'm working very closely with Joe to see what's best for the community. And, you know, at the middle school level, springs and mon. Springs and Montauk are also gonna have their team now. So now we have four girls lacrosse teams all feeding into one program, which is very good. But it, it also gives more girls the opportunity to participate.
And can we, I'll be long gone, but can we house that here if we can?
Yes, and we'll use the pilot program from the middle school this year. We have the goals, we have the equipment, we have a coach, uh, and if, if the natural progression would be a JV. Uh, if, if the numbers dictate that way, if, if the interest stays flat or sinks, then we don't do that. This is just, uh, this is just a, a snapshot of where we are in terms of school size, which is the biggest part of what I do, is kind of, uh, school placement is based off of these numbers. These numbers are derived from, uh, next year's ninth through eleventh grade, okay? So, uh, these numbers dictate what leagues you're in. So typically, these are our opponents. Uh, these are Class C teams for most sports. There are exceptions.
Sorry, sorry, this is the number of total students in grades nine through eleven?
Yes. Uh, they actually give a...
Nine through eleven or nine through twelve? I'm sorry.
Uh, it's nine through eleven. We discount next, we discount the senior class from this year for next year. And they don't, and they, so they're, they're actually counting, uh, they take three of the grades, not four. They, they never count seniors. So it's, uh, this is a formula that they use throughout the state. Uh, our number usually resides between two twenty-five and two forty. Um, so, uh, actually, a school with the exact same number, one of our rivals, has left the section. Uh, so these are the teams that we compete against. These, the, when you're comparing apples to apples in sports, these are the teams that we're looking for playoff births and, and such. This line here would be the D. Uh, Greenport is a little bit smaller. What I've been talking to most athletic directors is that their numbers are declining, but these are the numbers and they're gonna lock them in for two years now.
Wait, Eric, I'm sorry, could you just talk to us a little bit more about, um, you mentioned Stony Brook is no longer a member of Section 11?
Yes.
What does that mean? And so are they still playing sports against other schools?
Stony Brook has, uh, they are a private school that has been accepted into Section 11 because they follow the Section 11 bylaws of the Public High School Association. What they've decided to do, uh, and there's several factors into this, and I alluded to it, I believe it was at the last, or two board meetings ago, is, um, they've decided that they're gonna go into the private school, a private school league of their choice. I can't speak for Stony Brook. I don't know what they're going to do. Uh, but essentially what they've done is they've said that we are not going to be a member of Section 11 anymore. So, uh, it would be the same as, uh, St. Anthony's or Long Island Lutheran.
And a lot of those private leagues allow you to actively recruit. So that's the big difference. You can't recruit from other areas as a public school and pay for a child to go to your school. In the, in the private leagues, you can. So, that, you know, that's one of many reasons why schools opt to do that.
I believe, so I believe the biggest reason for Stony Brook leaving, and they, and they gave a letter to Section, was, um, essentially, they couldn't compete with the transfer rule. Uh, and not to dig too deep into it, but, uh, essentially, all Stony Brook's students are transfer students. So, um, kids would have to sit out years and stuff, so, uh...
Wait, they imposed that in high school? So if a kid comes into our... Wait, if, if a child moves into Sag Harbor during high school, are they considered a transfer student?
There's many layers, but they move into the district, they are not considered a transfer student because they, they move the district residence.
Okay, so then what's considered, like, if somebody lived here but then paid to go to Southampton because they went to play sports there? Would that be considered as transfer?
They get a one-time exemption to the transfer rule because they can return to their home district. There's many, there's many facets to it. I would, I would love to sit down with you and explain the transfer rule. It's, it's, we have worked on it every year. It's, it's very complex. There's many, there's many what-ifs, and, uh, we could sit here all night and, and do it. It's, uh, but essentially, Stony Brook left for that reason.
So, you know what?
And they left in good standing, so.
Thank you, Eric.
So wait, what does that mean? That we, we be...
We don't compete against them anymore.
We don't compete against them.
Yes, I understand that. But did they put someone else? Did they, did, did they have to make someone else a C in order to match the...
Nope, they do not. So it, it, it is a little bit of a blow because now, now, to replace our leagues, we have to play crossovers against schools that are slightly larger. Then I skipped a couple, like Babylons in this, in this range. I was just trying to give everybody a range of, of where our opponents are. Because anytime you have somebody leave that little pack, then someone's either gotta come down or come up. We gotta have somebody to play.
But they can't say, "Okay, we're gonna make the cutoff three twenty-one. Madetuck, you're a C school this year."
No, they, but they do move the cutoffs, uh, annually, uh, percentages. Essentially, they want twenty-five percent of all the schools in each classification.
Got it.
This was the I-Tri, uh, excuse me, I-Tri presentation, uh, on December eleventh at the halftime of the varsity, uh, girls' game. It went rather well. They, they had a very, uh, very informative video. Um, it was well-attended by I-Tri alumnus, alumni, excuse me. Um, I just wanted to get the word out there that we have this wonderful program in our school. Uh, the I-Tri staff and, and Katie worked with me on this one, as did Ms. Maritas, um, excuse me, Cariero. This was a ni, this was a nice event. Uh, it wasn't, it wasn't a packed gym, but, um, I'm looking to do more things, uh, to involve I-Tri into our, into our mainstream athletics, to highlight these girls that have done such a wonderful job. Some photos from the swim meet. Uh, I got soaked, uh, but, uh, it was great. Uh, we have, we have some very good swimmers here, and we don't talk about them a lot. Uh, we, not only do we have a fabulous swimming program in combination with East Hampton, our Pearson students are major contributors to these teams, and I would love to gloat about them at another time. Um, these are our basketball girls, uh, some pictures from our JV and varsity, and then we have our boys and our cheerleading team and our seventh and eighth grade volleyball. Uh, and I think, uh, this is our, uh, this is our phys ed teacher, uh, teaching YouTube on Saturdays with a gym full of girls, and, uh, the YouTube program has, has been exceptional. Uh, I think there's a, there's a huge, uh, I don't know if we recognize this guy right here. Um, but, uh, the YouTube program has been an exceptional program that I think the community has really got behind. And, uh, and that's all I have. I'm sorry, I went, I went on a little...
Eric, how many, how many, uh, students are participating now and families in...
We have over a hundred and seventy students in YouTube, I believe. Uh, don't quote me on this, but that's the largest number we ever had. And, uh, I can't, I can't say enough about, it's, it's just, you know, we're using the vehicle as of basketball to galvanize the community. And, uh, and I would like to see it, and I think we're gonna see it, applied the same way to the Little League. Uh, you know, they've created a board. They, they're doing it the right way. And, uh, it's very nice to watch from afar, uh, because, uh, I just think everybody's getting it. You know, they're getting it that we want as many kids doing constructive stuff as opposed to maybe stuff that's not on task. So...
Eric, do you know, in terms of, it's a great number, and I've heard a lot in the community about how successful this is, this is fabulous. Do you know about how many of those, those students participating are girls versus boys? Are we getting a good showing on both sides?
I don't have the breakdown, but I, I can pretty much, I can probably name them all. So it's, uh, I would say the girls' numbers are very close to the boys' numbers.
That's great.
You know, at the third and fourth grade level, we have, uh, it's, it's a little bit more thir, boys at the, uh, there's a little bit more boys, but, um, we do have two teams at each level, so...
That's great.
It's equal, and the K1 is very strong as well.
Perfect.
I got an emergency phone call the first day you guys started. Was there something at the, going on at the school? And I said, "I don't know." So I called Eric, and he was like, "Yeah, we're having YouTube." I was like, "Well, there's no parking that left" because there were so many people there.
Yeah, and that, and, you know, uh, I know Spirit Night is, is about the high school students, but they will be highlighted, uh, and it's pretty cool to watch. So if you guys could attend Spirit Night, it'd be great.
See, Phil, I let you go last on purpose.
Thank you. Well, good evening, everybody, members of the board, superintendent chairs, fellow administrators, members of the community. I wanna start off by, uh, also welcoming Ms. Schaefer. Congratulations. And, uh, thank you all for hiring me for the position. And I've really enjoyed, uh, my first three days here, and I wanna thank all of you. Uh, the administration is wonderful. Everyone's made me feel right at home. Thank you. Thank you, one and all. So we have a draft, uh, budget calendar here for our workshops. And, uh, this is tentative to change, but as of right now, we're looking at February fifth as our first budget workshop, and there are, all the budget workshops would start at six thirty here in the library. And the first one would include the Board of Education, Central Administration, Legal Audit, and Public Information Services that I would present, and, uh, the technology, uh, budget that Scott would present. Then we're looking at the, the next week on February the twelfth, uh, for insurance, employee benefits, athletics, buildings and grounds, and capital projects. Uh, Vicki and Tom will do the employee benefits, and Eric for the athletics, Marcus for buildings and grounds, and, uh, and capital projects. March the twelfth, a month later, we're looking at revenue projections, tax levy projections, appropriated fund balance, uh, projections, and transportation, of which Maude will present. Uh, March the twenty-sixth, we're looking at the tax levy limit, the tax levy impact with the projection based on current year's assessed values. And then Matt and Betty will present the elementary school, and Jeff, Brittany, and Mike will present the middle and high school. Then on April the eighteenth, we're looking at the adoption of the budget, uh, the Eastern Suffolk Bosse's budget vote and election, which would be at six thirty P.M. And with that, we'll cover, Barbara would cover, uh, special education, and Barbara and Scott for, uh, Bosse's services. Uh, Christine and Tom for debt service and transfers to other funds. Uh, then at that point, the adoption of the two thousand eighteen nineteen operating budget for the May vote, and, uh, the adoption of the property tax report card, which I'll prepare. Uh, April twenty-third is the, uh, again, the budget workshop at six thirty. Uh, that would be the Board of Education's, uh, educational meeting, uh, informational meeting. It's a review of the entire budget. May the seventh, uh, the board once again will have, uh, will meet and convene a budget hearing. And, uh, the Board of Education, uh, Educational Meeting at six thirty. And then the annual meeting for the statewide budget vote is scheduled for May the fifteenth. And, uh, that's what we're looking at for the budget workshop calendar.
I have a question. In the previous years, we've had, um, we've had, uh, more workshops cover this kind of almost the same list. Um, and those workshops often have gone more than an hour. So I'm just curious is, you know, if you go back, I don't know, ten years, we've always had, you know, five, six, seven meetings, and it looks like we have four before we're doing the adoption. So I'm just wondering what the, was that just because we had a changing of the guards?
Um, I, I think that, I think we've only, we're only shy, I can go back and look, but I think we're only shy of meeting. I, I do. I think we're, we're pretty, we're pretty in keeping with what we've done, um, in the past, but I can, I can check.
Yeah, I, I went and checked. You know, most years after the cap, we had, we had six meetings before. And I'm, I'm not advocating meetings to have meetings. Usually, we've just needed them to be able to have enough time to go through. Because then we have a board meeting, usually after these, there's, there's the board meeting, right? So, so I'm, you know, I'm just putting out there that I hope that we've really allocated enough time to go through this. That's all.
Um, and the other, uh, thing I think that, um, may have been a piece of it is we did, we did shift to, which I think we had prior, but we had gone through different business administrators, and with each one has their own style. Um, but we did go by, um, the line-by-line budget, which I, I think we had...
We've been doing it for quite a while.
I, I do appreciate when you say that, but I think Jennifer's level of line-by-line, I, I think it's an epic line-by-line. I, 'cause I can, I can attest from the administrator's point of view, they had never done a line-by-line. It said Jennifer, line-by-line, and I think each one of them would agree with me, down to the baseballs. So, um, and because we've been doing that now, this is, you know, our fourth year of that line-by-line, there's a, there's, there's a routine and a piece built up to that, and we are, you know, we are their tax levy limit. So, in my day, you know, this is like, like, like thirty-first year of budget building, we always had a little something to work with. And I've made it very clear to everyone that, that we are, we're flat. Our spending is flat. Where you're adding something, you've gotta compress something someplace else. So it isn't like the luxurious years in the past where we were adding seven percent or eight percent. It, our spending is flat. It, there isn't, there isn't a robust conversation because we're not adding anything. We do hope to always capture revenue throughout the year so that we can add little things on, but, um, we, we've been, we've been flat for a lot of years now. I mean, it's, it's a long time. So the years of long budget presentations and where, where do we wanna allocate our resources? And I, I think we have to face the fact that those days are over.
There's still six meetings here.
No, no, I'm talking about the, the meetings, uh, on April eighteenth, we adopt... No, no, on April eighteenth, the Board of Education adopts the budget. That's before it goes out to public.
Oh, I see. Okay, so you're not counting the twenty-third.
We're covering the long list before then. So, no, I, it was just an observation that we, you know, that even two years ago, we had six meetings, and we went overtime in many of those meetings. But if we have to start the board meetings late, then we start the board meetings late because this is really important. And I assume that you'll do the, you know, that the, the tour will happen to the PTSA and the New York Civ Council and any organization that wants you guys to come in, you'll go in and do your, the workshop.
I've already told Phil that we, we get to take this on the road, and he's pretty comfortable doing that. Yeah.
Um, Victoria, can I ask a question? April eighteenth is a Wednesday, so somebody help me on that one. Is that, the, that, that's the day we have to vote on that? Is that...
Yeah, it's the birthdays. Yeah.
So that's where it, it makes it a Wednesday?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have, uh, Board of Ed meetings in between these dates? 'Cause for some reason, the Feb. twelve to March twelve seems like a big gap, and I know it's the February break, but am I missing something?
We have February fifth and February twelve.
Right, and then, and then it literally jumps to March twelve?
Yes.
Because of the break, right?
Yeah.
So if worse comes to worse and we need it to stick one in, then we can always do it. Okay.
I have a question from the board?
Uh, I had a question for the March twelfth meeting, and maybe this would be directed toward Mr. Malone. I know we're talking about transportation survey options. Is that something that would be complete before Maude presents the transportation budget?
I, I didn't hear the first transportation surveys, huh?
Yeah, the survey that we're considering, considering. Is that something that would be complete before this budget?
Or referring to the, um, consult, consultation services?
Right.
I can jump in now or wait until...
He's got a present. He's got a present.
I was gonna, I was gonna update the committee report.
Yeah, go ahead. We'll, we'll wait till...
Sure.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Alright, do you want to, um, talk about the genesis of this calendar?
Oh, yes, and I didn't put that up on the, on the slides, but, um, so, you have in front of you the Eastern Suffolk Bosse's school calendar. Um, what you don't see in front of you is all of what is, um, culture to Side Harbor, which is, um, the administrators still need to add in all of the, um, the Regents exam dates, the, um, through the rate assessment dates, um, and the cultural pieces to our dates. So we have to be in keeping with, um...
First day of school.
The first day of school, right, and we have to honor our, um, our contract as well. So those pieces will be added in, those will be sent out to the board, and then we'll, um, be looking at that for the February fifth. So that'll be on the board meeting for the February fifth, and hopefully for adoption on the business meeting in February. Okay?
Can I ask one question about this?
Sure.
Because this struck me. Typically, students don't start, at least in this district, the day after Labor Day. It's usually two days after Labor Day. Was, is this unusual for Bosse's? I don't remember. I thought they usually started a few days after Labor Day too. This, it's just seemed odd this year.
We usually start the day after Labor Day with the parent, with the teacher conference. Right.
Right.
Alright, so we, so Bosse's has it as students, but you're just a teacher.
Yeah, and it makes it hard because our kids are missing their first day of where they go over, um, code of conduct. That's not unusual for Bosse's to do that. They'll, they'll, they'll pull them in. But we also express to them that then they have to redo the code of conduct with our students, and they have to, you know...
It just implicates that...
That's good. My plane doesn't land till midnight that night. Go ahead.
Alright, is there anything else under these superintendents report? Wait, it, it doesn't say that the first day of students is before Labor Day?
No, it said the day after Labor Day.
The day after Labor Day.
Oh, yeah, but, but that's fine. It's after Labor Day. I mean, yeah, that's true. Usually, we fall after, a little after that.
So our, but our...
Wednesday.
It's not ours. It's Bosse's. This is Bosse's.
Okay, so we don't usually have two days for Rosh Hashanah, right?
We do sometimes.
We do? Really?
But our students that are attending Bosse's programming will, they miss, they miss their first day of current education or, you know, maybe taking students their very first day.
That probably happened.
So you'll have the schools draft for, for first...
So you'll have the schools draft for, for first guys on the next meeting?
Yes, yeah. And then we should adopt that in our February business meeting, right?
Okay, that's good. All right, anything else for superintendents?
No.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to move into the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 1 through 3?
So moved. Second.
I'm sorry, is it motion?
Any discussion? Oh, sorry. Hang on, I need to make one first, second. All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, motions carried. Can I get a motion to approve Social Education Item Number 4?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Can I get a motion to approve Business Items 5 through 12?
So moved.
Any discussion?
I had a question based on Mr. Sivoni's comments in, in Form 1. He mentioned that there was an online cooperative. Do you know what he meant by that? I was intrigued.
I know, he said an online portal to purchase.
Oh, that's what he said, okay, no, I didn't hear him correctly. And I just wanted to once again thank the American Music Festival and those, the, that organization is founded by many residents within Seid Harbor that live in our school district. It's wonderful they're giving that, thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Can I get a motion to approve Personnel Actions 13 through 18?
So moved.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I, I, number 14 to me is with regret. So he did a tremendous amount for the school.
Yeah, who'd be less preferred? Any other discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Questions carried.
Can I make a suggestion on one of them? It wasn't a discussion, but the girls who code club is a new club. And I don't know if the, the Chamber Group is, is new as well. So if we could just put a, you know, an extra concerted effort to communicate that to not only the students, but the parents. You know, I think over-communicating when you have new clubs and there are, you know, there will be a higher lift.
Yeah.
At this time, we'll move into committee reports. And I believe Mr. Malone is taking over for, give us an update on that transition.
Sure, no problem, thank you.
So our Transportation Committee has met three times. Once in November, December, and actually most recently today at 4:00 PM. And as a group, we've been working really hard to get a better understanding of the overall program here in Seid Harbor. And we've also, at the request of the Board of Ed, have been discussing our thoughts on whether or not we should reach out and contract with a consultant to come in and put eyes on our program, look at some of the short-term decision-making that needs to be done, and also some long-range planning. Today, at our meeting, actually Mrs. Graves joined us, as well as our Transportation Director, Maude Stevens. I think the conversation was very helpful for all the members of the committee to just get a better understanding of the tasks at hand, and how having someone from the outside come in and take a look at our program would be really beneficial. Maude, our Transportation Director, agreed with that sentiment. So therefore, we felt it would be wise for us to go ahead and bring a consultant in. What we're going to do over the next week or so is just reach back out to the two companies. We received two proposals. We have some specific questions to ask them, make sure that they can touch on those in their studies. And on the, is it the 5th, February 5th, we'll make a formal recommendation to the board.
In terms of engaging with the consultant, what is the goal of, or their task? Whoever we hire, is it to figure out if we can do what we're doing now for less money, or to have more efficient routes, or what it would cost to go to one mile instead of two? What, what, what is the goal?
I, I would say all of the above. Specifically, we have the request from members of the community to take a look at the current busing limits, and whether or not that would be something we could feasibly make an adjustment to, lowering the limit from, say, one mile to maybe a half mile. And what would be the implications of that? That would be something that, as a board and a community, we would need to discuss. And it would be put up to the taxpayers in a referendum, so. So that's an example of, you know, an immediate task that needs to be addressed. But long-range planning, efficiencies that maybe if somebody from the outside takes a look, look at how we do things, maybe they would make some good recommendations that would lead to longer-range savings for the, for the district.
So this, this wouldn't be, I'm sorry, this would be for a referendum in May, then? This would, would have to be for the following year, right?
Well, for the, the idea of changing the busing limits, that's possibly something we could put to the taxpayers in May, if we can move quickly and prudently.
Just a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Did the committee develop an RFP for those proposals?
We did not, no. This was something that, over the summer, the district just reached out to get some proposals from different firms in the area.
So, so then what did the propose, how did the companies, what did they base their proposals on then?
These are, these are unique services, so they would contract those from Bosie's. So Jennifer put out an RFP-like proposal, and these were the ones that, that put their services back in. So we would contract to Bosie's.
Okay, so can we see whatever that proposal was that went?
They were going to present on, on May, on the 5th, on February 5th.
Okay, will you all include what it was that you asked the companies to do?
Absolutely.
Thank you, okay.
And then you'll, you'll get that in advance from them. And they have a lot of questions.
Right.
That they're very guided. Like, one of the members is, is really concerned about, you know, the, the ability to walk to school.
Right.
So, and, and, you know, is it going to make any difference? You know, so what kind of captures does, could the consultants recommend? Or like walking to school, and, you know, what kind of, you know, data could be surmised from that? So.
Right. Can the, I'll just add the, some of the examples of presentations that the various groups have done in the past, that we've been able to look at, are very thorough. Even touch upon things that, you know, maybe groups have not thought of, i.e. different fuel sources in the future, looking at some of the environmental impacts of the transportation program. I think from the examples that we've received, the proposals indicate very thorough studies being done. So we're optimistic about.
I think Stephanie had a question.
I don't want to open up a can of worms, but Matt, on, on the 5th.
February 5th, yeah.
Are you going to have a result, a suggestion from the consultant, or that's?
No, to see if we should even hire them.
To, to, to see if we should hire them?
Right.
And a, and a recommendation as to which firm we believe would be the best.
But do we think if we did that with a, between February 5th and April 18th, would they be able to do what we need them to do?
They would have to work very quickly, but they have indicated that they could.
That they can.
They'd have to be appointed by the business meeting on February 22nd, though.
It only gives them like six to, like seven weeks to get this all done, which.
That only one asset.
Right, but remember, it's just the, the piece about the busing adjustment, not the full study. That one item.
That one item, right. And so on February 5th, if, if the question, the question I would have is, can you analyze consultants two miles to one mile, one mile to a half a mile? Every, get rid of the flagpole rule, and tell us what it would cost if you picked up every kid?
You would not have that answer on the 5th.
No, 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 but we could, we could, right. That could be included in.
That, that will be included in that, yes.
The elimination of the flagpole rule completely. Not a, not a certain amount of steps.
Well, we would be asking them to look at what we currently do, and what adjustments could be feasible for the district.
Okay, but we're not outline, I get, I'm saying it wrong. We're not saying, can you look at it, what we currently do, and then look at it a half a mile from the flagpole? Can we, are we saying, give us all options as to what would, thank you.
Correct.
Thank you.
And would that include leveraging external vendors versus buying additional buses? Will they look at that component, too? Because there's a lot of ways to, to address, if we decide to increase, address it.
I think for the, for the initial question of that potential referendum in May, no. It would be a very, a very finite, finite question. We need, could we, could we do this, and what would be the best, best way to go about it? But then there would be many more components to the study thereafter.
I just think that if we're going to ask the public to vote on it, they would need to know how much it was going to cost.
Oh, absolutely, that would be.
Right, so whether it's going to be that we buy our buses or outsource.
If we did this, this is what it would cost. But some of those other more unique ideas, that would be in the longer range.
Does Tesla make buses?
Very expensive buses.
They may be able to recommend.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Malone.
You're welcome.
Share Decision Making Middle School, we'll probably scrap that.
They had, that had to be canceled today because of, due to illness.
Yep. Diversity and Inclusion Committee?
Well, you just skip wellness, because I can, I can speak to that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it was the, go ahead.
The Wellness Committee's been focused on a couple of things. One of the big focuses has been how to make the cafeteria more inviting. And so actually, Crin Olson presented a bunch of, a great sort of concept on it, on making it more colorful, and some fabrics from all different, you know, countries around the world to put on cover the soundboards, which right now are sort of this gray, tan, yucky color, and sort of do nothing, sort of bring real color into the cafeteria. And Brittany is looking into furniture to purchase for the lounge area, which is sort of a backroom area, to, again, have the sort of more inviting atmosphere, as well as to help for the after-school program. There was a spirited discussion about the implementation of the wellness policy. And so I'm not going to go into that, and I'm using your line, spirited discussion, Katie, you always use that line. But, but Brittany and a student and another member of the committee are planning to present to the board what the discussion is, and what the committee would like to make some suggestions in terms of that. And then the other discussion that came up was the issue of athletes and their ability, or right now, their inability to eat on the buses when they're going to and from venues. And that was a big concern for members. And then there was discussion about, that is also being discussed by, for the Athletic Committee, and what the proper venue for that was. But the Wellness Committee felt like if there was anything that they could help, because they felt it was very important that students were, are able to eat. And so how to help resolve that problem. And the Wellness Committee had some ideas and thoughts on that, but.
My God, I like the Wellness Committee now.
Well, you know, hello. Anyway, and then diversity, because I'm on that, too. I can mention, yeah, go ahead, thank you. If I can even remember. Oh, so they, oh, wait, no, diversity. No, I am on that, too, and.
They presented.
Yeah, they presented.
So we just did that, we can skip over that, right? Because we just went over that last time.
I do have a question about that.
And then Seid Harbor, but I can come up to that, because I can, because I'm on that, too, and we can come to that.
Can I ask a question about the diversity? And it was, I thought about this after the presentation, which was very helpful. Is there a process where we're auditing from the students where the pain points are? I know that the, from the presentation you're meeting with, and getting presentations from the community organizations, but I just thought, is there, is there a diagnostic process? We say, hey, we've surveyed the students, and here's the three things that seem to be the real pain points. How do we address those first? That would seem like if we haven't done that, we would want to understand that. Is that we could get to some of those issues sooner?
Well, the only thing that we're trying to really learn about is that what I've learned from the people that take care of our diverse populations out in the community is we can really screw things up. Is that we can really, when you think about your poverty populations, your undocumented families, so some of these diverse populations, when you're trying to be helpful, you can actually expose them and you can hurt them. So we're trying to get educated first. So what is your line, fast as, slow as fast?
Slow as fast.
Slow as fast. She's the head of the, the group, so I should, I should have you talking.
Well, I actually did come up at our last meeting. And we were trying to think of a way that we could put it out there to students. We were thinking of maybe something like Survey Monkey, but that could be a little questionable as far as confidentiality. But it has come up, and we are conscious of the need to have the voice of the kids heard, obviously. And we're just really trying to think of how, how to go about doing that in a thoughtful way.
And we have a really eloquent student that's on it.
We do, yes.
And she's great. And she's actually building her, a class, a school project around this. So she really wants to get her teeth into it and be the ambassador for the students. So the library and CME are our next two partnerships that are going to be presenting, who really do a lot of work for our students. So I really kind of want to learn from them before we, just don't want to make any mistakes.
Well, and that's the thing. I feel like it's really important to tap into local resources, so local community organizations that are already doing things really well, just with the idea of tapping into that experience. And then we, as a school, could refer, you know, where, where appropriate. So we know where we're getting that information from, and then it being a credible source. So we're inviting these organizations to come in and speak to us as a committee. Realizing that this isn't something that's going to end in the next month or two. Hopefully, it's ongoing, that it's not just a year-long committee because there's so much work to do. But that being said, we really want to be thoughtful as far as what we present and what we look to focus on and prioritize.
And the retreat and Minerva from Ola took Betty aside afterwards, and were pretty fairly straightforward about things that we could do better. So they, about what we could do for children and families, and things that we could get busy on right away. Because they work with our youth. So I think you're right, because we did. I said right to Minerva, how can we survey, you know, Susan was.
And there are other districts that have done it. So I think that you can look to what other, there's no need to reinvent the wheel.
Well, yeah, I, I brought it up. I brought up the very first meeting. But one of the things that I suggested was, I wasn't wild about the survey idea, was some kind of system, and Betty's right, we were talking about how to do this, where it'd be some one-on-one meetings. So with somebody that kids could trust and feel comfortable with, and really explain some of, you know, our internal challenges that we can address, so.
I think the Policy Committee, we were talking about the bus issue. Is Policy Committee looking at that as well?
The Policy Committee is, is doing the bus right now, because we're working with medically fragile student policy. And the, the law of the district right now, the law of the district, is not to have food on buses. And I know that's really hard for, so what I've asked our administrators to do is reach out and find out how they solve this in other schools. And we're going to be meeting on that on January 30th. Because this is such a challenge. Because, so let me just give you the simulation. Because allergies are getting much worse. Like, we would say, well, in the old days, nobody had any allergies. Well, that's not anymore. Children have life-threatening allergies. If they come in contact with, with peanut butter, or with, they, they can die from those allergic reactions. I was, I was talking to a mother the other day that does not send her child on any field trips at all, because she can't guarantee that the lunchboxes that are around them, that her child will not have an allergic reaction. And you have bus drivers that are driving down Neuyak Road with their back to 30 or 40 children, that if a child has an allergic reaction, can't pull that bus over. So if children are on a sports bus, eating anything, and you, you know, any of those Tex-Mex bags can have nuts inside them, so they could have peanuts that fall in between the seeds. A little child riding along puts their finger between those seeds, and those nuts come in contact with that child, child puts it to their face, has an allergic reaction, we could lose a child. So our policy states that you have to have nut-free and allergic-free environments, which includes the classroom, transportation. So it's not like we're trying to be mean to kids. So what we've done is we've reached out to other school districts to find out, how do they do this? And so some school districts say, JV, you know, varsity girls, basketball, here's your cooler, here's all your food, you eat off, like, the moment you get there, the varsity girls eat. And then the JV, when they're done playing, they get their cooler food, they eat, but they don't eat on the bus at all. So, you know, we don't have an answer yet. We're, our next meeting will be to look at that. But your policy is literally the. But your policy is literally the law of your school. So at some point, we crafted a policy that said, you can't eat in the classroom, and you can't eat on a school bus. And it's not to starve our athletes, because you don't wanna starve your athletes. But you do wanna be cognizant, when they're eating on that bus, that same bus the next morning is holding our precious cargo. They're holding our kindergarten to fifth-grade children.
So Katie, the Wellness Committee knew that and acknowledged that, and was trying to develop solutions. Because what we understand is happening now is, you know, the kids need to be able to have food, and so they're sneaking it on. And if you sneak it on, then you run the risk, we have in our vending machines stuff that has the nuts, et cetera. So rather than, you know, come up with things where the kids can be given some kind of snack that's approved bus-able, so we know it doesn't have the allergy issues, right? And then the kids can eat. And by the way, I know for a fact, we have, we let kids eat in classrooms, because we have, we have a schedule where some kids are getting lunch at 10:45, right? And so they go huge amount of time where they can't have food. We know what that means, when kids go extremely hungry, they need to be able to eat. So I think it's better if we look at, what are those allergies, what do we have to address? And then make sure that our vending machines have stuff that's approved. There's all kinds of alternatives. In fact, there are even nut-free granola bars. So we can find that stuff, there, there are, you know. And so then you can have that, or also, or have, like, set up, like, allergy-free, you know, snack, whatever, so that the kids can take on the rest. Now, the other thing we understood was that what had happened before is also kids were leaving a mess on the bus, and that that wasn't fair to bus drivers either. So we also sort of brainstormed ideas of what might work in terms of addressing that issue as well. So, you know, it was, like I said, it was very spirited discussion, but I think everybody on the committee recognized that these kids need to be able to eat, and how do we address those issues?
I mean, three or four years ago, we still, as a district, you could get to-go meals. And you'd pick them up at the, near the end of the day from our cafeteria, and it was to eat on the bus on the way, so you wouldn't be starving. And we have many, you know, when you're dealing with winter sports or indoor sports, you know, you've got the second team that's playing, you know, some of these games are starting at 6 o'clock and finishing at 8:30, and they had lunch at noon or 11 o'clock. So, but it used to be until a couple of years ago that we actually allowed them to take meals out, and the cafeteria prepared, and they, there weren't nuts in them. It was, you know, it tended to be cold cuts and fruit. So I, I, I think this is a problem we need to solve. Because kids are, I know that, I mean, we all, many of us have kids who play on these teams. They're all eating on the bus, guess what? They're all bringing food and eating on the bus, so let's do it smart.
Do you know why we stopped the takeout?
Well, well.
I don't know that we did.
It's not on the website anymore. It used to be an option on the website, and you could actually email, but I don't, you know, I don't know.
Well, I think we got to the level, the reason the policy's looking it over, is we had an OCR complaint. And that's a fairly high-level thing. And one of the pieces that OCR asked for, which is a special education complaint, that someone had it in their individual education plan. So when you get that, and the OCR asked us to review our policy, so that's.
That's what we're doing.
That's what we're doing.
Yeah.
So.
So we'll look forward to it.
And again, it is the law of the district, right.
That report.
So what the next step is, is the, um, the, the. So I don't think the wellness policy has to worry, really worry about problem-solving that. The school administrators are reaching out to all the other districts, because I bet you, because there's.
We're not the first ones.
We're not the first ones. There's, there's an answer there, there's an answer.
Well, I'm sure there is, and what I'm just saying is that the Wellness Committee had some very good ideas, so, you know, yeah.
So let's listen, you know, so let you be confident. So it was Brittany there?
Yes, yeah.
And then she's, she, all she has to do is share them with Mr. Nichols.
So the Wellness Committee is tackling this topic, is that?
Well, they, they knew that the Athletic Committee was tackling too. The point is that people were concerned, because we believe that this is an issue the kids are dealing with.
It is.
And it needs to be fixed.
So thank you for doing it.
And right now, we have athletes who are on the bus, who have nut-free products they're sneaking on and eating. We wanna prevent that. So the way to prevent that is actually to figure out an alternative.
Right, and what I'm telling you is we really have, it may not be happening fast enough, but our administrators are working on researching. I've got, I've got Mr. Nichols, I've got Mr. Guinan, have been reaching out to other districts. And it doesn't need to go to the Athletic Committee, because the Policy Committee, who's structuring the law of the district, has got this, guys, they're working on it.
Do liaisons have anything to report?
Sure, January 16th, I attended the SAFE meeting, it was in this room. And this whole, this was set up as an entire rectangle, and every seat was full, so I thought that was really good. And they were focusing on Harbor Fest, how to implement their method into, actually, no, that was Winter Fest, I'm sorry. And they came up with the idea of using ice, ice scrapers. They also talked about TIPS training, having some community members being trained in TIPS training, which is how to check IDs, how to recognize if someone's been overserved. That was discussed. They also discussed, there were some Pearson kids, I think you had mentioned this, they attended a weekend in Filter Island.
Yes.
That was.
The HUGS.
The HUGS. And they came up with a logic model to prevent Jules, which is the form of vaping that's now very popular in the school bathrooms. So they came up with that model, and they're gonna work on it again February 10th. There's another Shelter Island weekend where they're gonna continue to work and try and implement that.
And I had people that were working on, it was, it's the, it's the Long Island Prevention Model that were out at Shelter Island, who came up and said, our students were unbelievable, that they were so far ahead on this because of all the work we've been doing last four years, and that they had an incredible logic model for how to work on this prevention.
We're gonna be, there's a couple of us that are gonna actually be working with the kids on PSA, a kids foundation.
Yeah, that's the other thing, Jay Snyderman knew all about it. He came up and said, I heard the kids were just amazing, right.
So that'll be fun.
What else, was that it for you?
The only thing was that they're working on a, a presentation for the elementary school parents. That was brought up by the Elementary School PTA. And they're hoping to bring that in, I think, in March, for an evening presentation for the parents.
Who's gonna make the presentation? SAFE?
Yes.
SAFE in Zakkara, that's, that's smart.
To the elementary school parents, how to deal with appropriate age-level discussions on these issues.
That's where they need to start, that's great. Okay, the Park Board, the next meeting is, I have a very big date on Valentine's Day with Marcus, because the Park Board meeting is February 14th, unless I can get him to change it on the 13th. And we're gonna do the introduction there. And then Phil, we'll need you soon after for Katie and I to get together with Marcus for, I'm sorry, and Eric, for a meeting for futures. Wall of Honor Committee, because Mike's not here, the next meeting is February 7th. So there's no update there. Point of Information, if that's my Robert Rule term, the HUGS after-school program is not running yet, or is running in the cafeteria?
It is not running yet.
It is not running yet.
It's not.
What's the start date?
Any day. They were just had some purchasing of furniture, and she had, I, Brittany's dealing directly with her, so I don't have, I don't have that information.
So in other words, we haven't hired the, the folks.
HUGS, HUGS is doing that.
HUGS is hiring, sorry.
HUGS is doing that.
You're right.
I don't have that, Brittany has that information, she's coming directly with her.
No, you're right, okay.
Excuse me, any other liaison reports? Okay, last two things, items for discussion. These were just a couple of things that trustees had brought to me in the meantime. January, do you wanna talk about the first one?
Yeah, I just wanted to open a dialogue with board members about possibly setting board procedure, so that future boards don't have to deal with reinventing the wheel. We went through the public interviews, I wanna know if you think it was good, if you think it was bad. I'm thinking that it's something that we should adopt as board operating procedure, so that when a future board is dealing with a vacancy, and they decide to go the special appointment route, the rules and regulations of how to do that in a public open meeting will already be set, and they don't have to do it again. When we were researching this to begin with, NISBA does recommend that the board already have operating procedures for these in effect, and it's something that, you know, we are lacking. And I think it would be a good thing to maybe adopt as a formal operating procedure.
So I'm hearing a motion on the floor that we, we think about adding this to our, our board operating procedures. We don't need to hide down the language tonight. But do you want to move forward, forward with memorializing the process that we used to appoint Susan Schaefer? Welcome. Do we think that was successful enough to kind of memorialize it in our board operating procedures? Can I get a second for the motion on the floor?
Second.
Second, excellent. Let's open the floor for discussion, go ahead.
I think, I think everybody thought that the process went well, and so I think it would be a good idea. And also, just if we at least memorialized all the details in the future, if board wanted to even tweak a little bit of it, we just have, I felt like we spent a lot of time on each, talking about each step. And so I think at a minimum, it would be good to at least memorialize all the details that we just did. And I think it went really well, so I'd be in favor of adopting it as something to do going forward.
Any other discussion on the floor? Go ahead.
I thought we were brilliant. I gave us a big round of applause for this one. Thank you, Alex, for saying that. Here's my only question, though. Let's say someone runs and, and was appointed for a two-year term, and then abdicates the throne a month in. And therefore, the remaining term is two years and 11 months. If we adopted this, would we be saying that the new board would have to, would not go to the public for a vote?
No, the law would remain the same. The board would decide whether or not to leave a vacant, to hold a special election, or to make their own appointment. In the event they decide to make a special appointment, this is the process.
They follow our brilliant process?
And it has to be public interviews.
Type that out.
You could still just have an election if it's.
You still have a choice.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
Other discussion on the floor?
Yeah. Sign it quick.
I, I think I see it a little differently, and aside, notwithstanding the person who's appointed, who I respect a lot in the filter on the board. But in terms of the process, I think it went, I think we did a lot of good work. I do think there were some things that didn't work for us, and we can get into that when we debate it. But this was my third time, and previous boards wanted to do it differently. And, and without having a set process, boards have an option of, that board at that time, how they do it. So I, I am not comfortable saying that we should eliminate those options for future boards, because that's how previous boards did it, differently than what we chose to do it. Doesn't mean that we can't memorialize, well, this is how we did it. So if they choose to do it this way, we documented the process to make it easier for them. But in five years, this might happen, and that board might wanna do it differently.
Right.
And so, and I don't mean differently meaning have an election. I mean, they may choose a different process to appoint, as the previous two times chose a different process to actually appoint. So I, I'm uncomfortable dictating to a future board and taking away those options.
That's actually one of the reasons why I think it would be good, because boards are supposed to act consistent and stable, and the pendulum isn't supposed to swing with individual board members. And so by setting consistent board operating procedures, it would just eliminate individuality and make it more of a cohesive board.
Well, I, I, but if that were the case, then we would have gone what the two previous boards did. But instead, this board decided not to follow the process that has been used in this district for the last several times, but decided to veer from that. So that just is an example that, depending on who's on the board, they may want a different process. Based on what you said, we should never have veered in a different direction then. So, and if you ask those board members, they were happy with how that went. So it's not a matter that they weren't happy. So I'm just, that's, I think I made my point.
So I wanna hear from all the board members before we vote. Susan's, either of you want to weigh in on the discussion on the floor?
I, I wanna give it more thought. I mean, I do think the process was good. I would prefer, whenever possible, that the board let the community decide, which I was very on the record of at the time. And I still would have liked to have the newspaper moderate, just because I think there were other questions that could have been good and interesting. Not, not to say it didn't all go well, and it moved quickly, we thought we were gonna be here until god knows what hour, and I think that, you know, and I'd be curious to hear from Susan what she thought on the other side of it. But, you know, I, I do think if, if we're looking back in hindsight to 2020, obviously, we all agreed, there wasn't enough notice, there was a person who had put his hat in the ring who couldn't be there, you know, things like that. So I think it would have been nice to have a little more wiggle room. But that's just, you know, Monday morning quarterbacking, I think. But I, yeah, I'm torn, I don't know, I'm sort of thinking about, I, I think it was a good process. I, I don't know that, I don't know that I would wanna tie the future board's hands. I did really like, however, that the interviews were public.
That's one of the main concerns, is to make sure that if there is a special appointment process, that interviews must be held during a public session.
Right.
Let's let all the, let's let all the board members.
And then just last one last point is that, you know, I saw some, you know, there's always chatter online, and saw some chatter online about the process. And one of the things that people said is that they thought that the executive session discussion should have been in public, which I'm just, well, happy to go on record with, I completely disagree. I think that it's an appointment, it was talking about personnel, it absolutely should have been an executive session. And I think that was completely appropriate. But to Chris's point, then you could have some people who would be on the board, if those individuals were on, they might want the whole thing in public. I don't know who would put their hat in the ring in that circumstance, but anyway, that's just my thinking.
I thought the, I thought the process was fair. I did think that maybe the newspaper should have mediated the questions. I think sitting in my end and being with my peers, and I thought the questions may have been, we all got asked the same questions. I thought maybe the question should have been, like, let me ask you a question. Three of you answer one question, three of you answer another question. Because by the time we got around to the questions, people were like, oh, what she said, but in a different way, in a sense. I liked the way that we did it that way. Because of, it was a good, it, it kept, you know, things moving along. You know, instead of going out for a full, long, you know, vote, it was, it was sufficient, I think.
Would anybody like to weigh in for a second time on the motion on the floor? Yeah, go ahead.
January and Chris both made good points. Because I, I wouldn't wanna, seems to me, it would be helpful to memorialize all the details of how it was done, because it seemed like there were still a lot of questions, even as to what had been done in the past. I think that would be helpful first and foremost. But I also, why would it have to be that we set the policy, and then that has to be followed? Is that the idea, that it would have to be followed in the future? Or just that this could be a procedure, whatever the details were, and then future boards would be up free to change or tweak things, whether it's the kind of questions that were asked, or whether they were really good questions?
Well, I think that, at least for me, that if we could keep the, in the board operating procedures, kind of a bare bones, I mean, not necessarily the exact questions, or the exact dates, or obviously those sorts of things, but just kind of a process, that might be good moving forward.
I, I think the public portion to be memorialized is the main issue. And, and the speed in which, if a future board shows not to have an election, what was my second choice to point?
Leave it vacant.
Or leave it vacant.
Leave it vacant, and to do this, that, that, that it be done in this width of a manner.
And, well, it's a big honor, but I think that, because, I think most people would probably agree, if it, if the vacancy came a long way from the next election, you probably don't have an election.
Correct, correct.
And you're gonna most likely wanna do something like this in a situation like this, that's a short timeframe. And it's helpful to at least have a procedure. Doesn't mean you couldn't tweak it, but just have a procedure, but so you don't have to spend half the time figuring out what the process is gonna be.
I mean, the, the procedure could just be that interviews must be held in public, right?
Yeah.
The, the, I, you know, I'm an advocate of doing things in public. I was on the committee that recommended this all get videotaped, so I'm a big believer in that. I have to say, now that I've done both, since we're reflecting on both, and I'm not saying that it can't be public, but the advantage that I experienced the first few times when it wasn't in public was, I mean, you didn't get, by the time the seventh person answered the question, they'd heard the six previous. And we had a lot, it was fabulous that we had so many wonderful candidates. Sometimes if you have two or three, you don't have that same issue. But you got, you got, you got answers that were their answers and not repeated. And I felt like we knew so much more about each candidate, because we had a real conversation with them. This was, I thought, very short in terms of the information we got from them. And I felt like I didn't, I, I, I'm so thrilled at all the candidates and who we, who we appointed, but it. But it, you know, if I didn't know who we appointed, it would have been harder. And I do think we need to make sure that we give more time to the public, so they know what night it is, not just what week it is. And that if we're gonna just have one night, it makes it really hard to be able to have all the candidates be able to attend. When we did the interviews last time and they were private, we had two separate nights to accommodate everybody. Not attending that night was a disadvantage for that candidate, a real disadvantage, which I feel bad about. And it was that, it was not the fault of the candidate that they had something. So I do think we have to be cautious about not reflecting on what didn't work, and just signing ourselves up to a policy, including things that were handicap.
So I don't wanna get too lost in the weeds with the actual, because the motion on the floor is that we think about memorializing something. So if there's, anybody else would like to weigh in a second time for the motion on the floor? All right, so I'm gonna call it to a vote.
As a point of information, memorializing means we're gonna.
Adding it to the board operating procedures. Adding something to the board.
But you said the motion's to think about it.
To think about what it would be.
Whether it would.
I don't understand.
So why is there a motion? Why can't we just agree that we're gonna think about it and then come back with some specifics and then have a motion on the specifics?
We will, we will.
Oh, okay.
But I'm not gonna waste the board's time if nobody's interested. If nobody wants, if nobody wants to think about putting it in the board operating procedures, I'm not gonna waste the board's time drafting something, sending it around, getting discussion.
Would it become policy? You're talking about a policy?
Board operating procedures.
So it's brought up not to follow. We don't follow a lot of our operating procedures right now.
Any other discussion on the motion on the floor?
No.
All right, all those in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? All right, motion carries. If you wanna send around a first draft, and then we can have further discussion on that. The other thing that was brought to me by a trustee is that with Tommy Jones Kivony stepping away from his post, the liaison appointments that he had and the committee assignments that he had are now open. So one of the one was legislative liaison, and Susan Lamontaine has asked to take over his spot. So I'd like to get a motion on the floor to appoint Susan Lamontaine as the legislative liaison.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
No one else is jumping up and down?
Can you name another meeting?
All right, all those in favor say aye.
May I have to vote aye?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Any opposed? And nobody else indicated that they were interested in taking his other positions to me. So Victoria, just remind me what his other things were?
Facilities planning.
Facilities and?
Audit, was it audit?
Audit.
There was one more.
And he's on one more.
There was one more.
Yeah, it was facilities.
Susan, are you interested in being on the audit committee?
There was a subcommittee.
Or transportation.
Yes.
And he was on transportation subcommittee.
But transportation is part of the, sorry, subcommittee. What night is the facilities committee meeting? Does anybody know?
What about audit?
So the audits?
Yeah, you should be. It took one to twice a year.
Yeah, that's, you should.
In my previous round, I was not in the auditing department.
And by the way, there may not be a meeting in the next three months anyway. So volunteer for that one.
I'm up for that. All right, so I'd like to ask for a motion to have Susan fill in and Tommy Jones instead in the audit committee.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, any opposed? Any other appointments that anybody else is interested in that were his?
Well, I, this is gonna throw out a suggestion. So Susan, you're already on the athletic committee as a parent, right? So, and you're now, you're on as a board member. So you could come off athletic if you wanted, because she's on as a parent and she could become the board member.
I don't think that we need to rearrange everybody's assignments right now.
Well, you're trying to cover other stuff and.
We'll just have three board members on the committee, which we're not supposed to have, I don't think, are we? What's the, is it two?
Why?
Was there two?
We'll put that on for another night, because we'll have to check the charter.
So then that might answer this question.
Right. Victoria, will you add items for discussion for upcoming board meeting to check the athletic committee charter? And then we'll send out an email to those if we're no longer in compliance, if we need to make an adjustment. Any other?
I just had a question.
Was he working or are you working with the village?
I am, I'm parking. And the, I wouldn't describe it as working with the village on their parking issue.
Right, I know.
But when I met with the mayor, she said that if we notify them before their monthly meeting that we needed a suspension of the local parking rules, then they could approve it at their public meeting and grant that to us. I know, I think he was developing a list and a calendar. And I think that was it for transportation. Yeah, and that was it for, yeah, and so, and they were very, she was very, it was her idea, and she was very amiable. I thought it was a great idea.
A great idea.
And then it was just, then we just need to communicate it to the parents, so they know that they're allowed to park there and not get a ticket.
All right, at this point, I'd like to move to public input, too.
Did you vote on Susan Schaefer?
We did.
I have the motion and a second.
It was a vote, it was unanimous. We're going really fast, Victoria.
Keep going, keep going. We can catch up later.
Doesn't, girl.
At this point, I'd like to move into public input, too. All right, at this mo, I'd like to make a motion to convene to executive session to discuss the most recent round of contract negotiations with a teacher.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? All right.